Okay, we're going to call to order the Board of Selectments meeting for February 24th. And we're going to go into executive session right off the bat pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints and to vote to approve or approve and release executive session meeting minutes.
And we're coming back.
Keef, aye?
I thought, aye.
Stone, aye?
And we're coming back to further conduct business.
Oh, and we're coming back to further conduct the regular business meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Bean.
Okay, we're back from executive session. Just to let you know, the meeting of the Board of Selectments generally recorded for transmission on Berlin Cable and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. We have approval of the February 13th and February 18th open session meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, were there any comments, questions? All right, hearing done, let's call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We've got correspondence, a letter to the Department of Revenue requesting Division of Local Services technical assistance.
Yes, through the chair, this is kind of exciting. The Division of Local Services actually has a technical assistance bureau that will come to cities and towns to do financial management reviews and other operational reviews and give reports on how things are going and make recommendations on best practices and things. And so because of all the changes the town has seen in the past couple of years with commercial development, residential development, changes in positions, new positions, et cetera, et cetera, I thought it would be a good time to have them come in and do a financial management review of our finance departments. And so I put together this letter that I'm asking the board to sign, and I have heard from Zach Blake, who's the Bureau Chief. He's told me that if we can get the request in, they could be here mid to late summer. So there is several months wait, but if we get it in, we can get in the queue. So I think that, well, my recommendation is that the board support this and we get the request into the state.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Okay, any comments or questions?
They came in when the Town Management Study Committee was meeting, and they were really, really helpful.
Good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Get ready with your public comment. All right, general public comment.
Do you want to comment or a question?
Or question.
I was walking down Linden Street, not Walnut Street, and I noticed that the cable is down along the stone wall and runs for quite a ways before it's tied to a tree, and I was just curious if anyone has noticed that.
I have not gotten a report, and so this would be the cable, the actual... Cable?
A cable line.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will notify...
I don't know if it's cable or telephone or...
Normally, if somebody's out, they would call the cable coming out, but...
Well, it's beyond Phipps House, which she's the last one, and it's all apple orchard.
So it's way down Walnut Street. Way down Walnut Street.
Okay. All right, we'll report that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, hearings, appointments, and presentations, we'll start with the Town Administrator's report.
Okay. Board has the 1870 Town Hall Manager Job Description before you tonight for approval. And we have received eight resumes from interested candidates for this position, eight. And so I would like to establish a screening preliminary interview panel comprised of Leanne Leahy, the interim 1870 Town Hall Manager, the Town Accountant, and one member of the former 1870 Town Hall Advisory Committee. And this would be to screen resumes and conduct preliminary interviews. Final interviews would be held with the Select Board. So I'd like to get going on that as soon as possible. I think we have a couple of viable, at least a few viable candidates in the group. And also with regards to the 1870 Town Hall Manager position, operationally, I am going to draft policies relevant to the use of the building, including, you know, recommended fee schedules and how they should be set, and they require approval of the board and things. So I'm going to work on that draft this week so we can have something in place for when a new person starts. And I want to thank the Personnel Committee and the Council on Aging for weighing in on the job description. They both offered comments, and it turned out to be, I think, a nicely done job description. The Benefits Consultant, so Dennis and I are working on developing the RFP scope of services for the Benefits Consultant to come in. We have kind of consolidated the narrative that he had previously issued, and we're doing kind of a bulleted list, just identifying each piece of analysis we're asking the Benefits Consultant to do. And on the week of March 2nd, I am going to consult with the Board and the Personnel Committee regarding issuance of the RFP, so you can see what the scope of services will entail. On Finance, the Berlin-Boilston Regional School District is going to be meeting this Wednesday at 7:30 with the Finance Committee. That meeting had to be rescheduled from last week, and the Council on Aging is scheduled for 8:15. Tomorrow night, the Berlin-Boilston Regional School District Committee is going to be having a budget hearing on its budget at the Tohonto, at Tohonto High School at 6:30 PM. I'm going to be attending that, and I hope others will also attend to listen in, but I want to know the numbers before Wednesday night. So the Berlin-Boilston Regional School District Capital Assessment was a bit of an issue, the timing of it was a bit of an issue this year with regard...
Do you mean the capital or do you...
Capital assessment.
Just the capital?
Capital, yeah, just the capital assessment. So the capital assessment is for all capital, well, all debt service due?
I didn't know if you meant the budget also.
Well, that could be adding to it, but the timing of the capital assessment is interesting at the moment because their debt service does not come due until spring, but they're collecting our capital assessment in November. And so had we been able to wait or spread out the capital assessment to make sure they had a timely payment in the spring, we probably would have mitigated some of our cash flow issues. So we're going to be working on that with the school district to see what we need to do to spread out those payments.
Is Bob aware of this?
Yes. Yeah, we've talked to Bob. Boilston had the same issue with the...
Oh, okay.
We, I have scheduled the Grand Hall at 1870 Town Hall for Thursday, April 16th at 7:00 PM for a pre-town meeting and budget forum. So my hope is that the Board will support this. I would really like not only the Administrative Finance Team to present this, I'm happy to, you know, to introduce articles and talk about various things, but I have asked the Town Moderator to be there to talk about town meeting protocols. I would love for the Board to be there, I'd love for the Finance Committee to be there, and I would encourage all article, warrant article proponents to be there to speak to their articles. So that would be April 16th at 7:00 PM.
And is that a good time for everyone?
I sure hope so. It's, you know, there are a couple of people that aren't available till a little after 7:00 on Finance, or at least one. So hopefully, they can just get there as...
Hopefully, they'll come anyway.
As soon as possible. We'll start with the, we'll start with the non-Finance articles maybe.
Right, right.
The next item is the River Bridge Development Agreement and Modifications. The Planning Board has signed a contract to conduct a fiscal impact analysis for impacts to various municipal services, particularly, particularly, public safety, EMS, traffic mitigation, student enrollment, enrollment, and other public services. I saw today, and I'm going to circulate this tomorrow to the relevant departments, there is a proposed timeline to begin this, and it's going to begin in March, and it's going to begin with a public safety impact analysis. So they are starting, they are starting here, and I have advised the Fire Chief and the Police Chief to get ready for...
And River Bridge is aware of this too?
Yes, River Bridge is actually going to be funding...
Right.
They're funding this study. I have, I have issued an RFQ, Request for Quotes, for Phase 2 electrical work at the Community Garden Shed. That would be to connect the power from the pole to the shed. So the first phase was done recently, that was just to kind of install equipment in the shed, and now it's time for power to be connected. So that's going to be the next phase, and the Highway Department has been asked to dig the trench in order to lay the conduit. Tomorrow at, I believe it's 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM, 1:00 PM, we have a solar pilot, we have a conference call. Our solar pilot team has a conference call with the Randall Road Project developers. That's to discuss the items that the town needs in order to develop cost and financial projections in the pilot agreement. And so I have informed the Electrical Inspector that no final permit is to be issued until the pilot agreement is executed and other special permit conditions are satisfied. So I think the developer has probably received that message and wants to move forward with the pilot agreement, so it's fine, that's good. And then on recreational marijuana, the 64 Banner Retail Establishment Proponent is preparing notice of a community outreach meeting to be held on March 10th at 6:30 PM in the Grand Hall at the 1870 Town Hall. I don't have additional specific details on that, but they have been moving steadily forward to get this, to get this published and to get notices to the school according to the Board's policy. And I believe they've also reached out to Cable Access because they're required to film Highway snow and salt expenses, I received a request from the Highway Superintendent that the snow and salt expense line is nearing depletion. There is $9,866.31 remaining in that line, and I am going to, under 4431D and the Municipal Modernization Act, the authorization has shifted to the Chief Administrative Officer, so I'm just going to continue to notify the Board that I will authorize deficit spending of that account up to $20,000 at this point. Additional requests can be brought forward, but I think it's good practice to, you know, to cap the deficit spending amounts, and you can always come back and ask for more. Let's see, the deadline to submit warrant article language was today at 4:30 PM. The last warrant article language to be received before the deadline was from Conservation Commission on a Wetlands Protection Bylaw. And as of now, we have 41, I believe it's 41 articles on the draft town meeting warrant, including that article. We had a Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan Core Team kickoff meeting last Wednesday, and, oh no, last Thursday, and we have set a date for a stakeholders, this is going to be an invitation, by invitation, a stakeholders workshop to be held the third or fourth week in March. Right now, we're polling stakeholders to see what their availability is. And then eventually, once that workshop is done, all the data is going to be compiled into a report, and we're going to be presenting all of it at a community forum in, I believe, in April. And then finally, Eloise asked if I would just convey the early voting times this week for the, for the presidential primary on March 3rd. So tomorrow, early voting will be held from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM. Wednesday, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Thursday, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And Friday, 12:00 noon to 1:30 PM. That is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
You see, you blowed with your 226, Margaret, so it stopped coming up 1126.
I was laughing to myself when I did this. I was like, I'm going to get this right once and for all. And then that date's going to pass this week. What am I going to do?
The town major.
I'm sorry.
What did I do? Right there, it just says 1870 Town Hall Major. I'm good at building majors, I built one for the stray cat, so you know, I can build one.
It's okay, Margaret.
Mary, let me correct that before it comes up.
Please.
All right.
There's no questions for Margaret?
Yes, that, you spelled manager.
We'll move on to old business. And you have an update for us on the research into regionalized public safety, I mean, public buildings and facilities, Director?
So this is an update on our follow-up discussion with Wes Boilston. So Lisa and I went to Wes Boilston and had a second meeting with their Town Administrator and their Board Designee. And this past week, we met with the Town of Boilston's full-time Facilities Director about his duties, what he does, and he essentially does everything.
So is Bill Barasa?
Bill Barasa.
Is he the Boilstons or Wes Boilston?
Boilston. So we invited, yes, we invited him in. We had also invited in Steve Pusatieri from the School District, and I neglected to follow up with Steve, so we ended up just meeting with Bill. And this was probably more relevant anyway because it deals with town facilities as opposed to school facilities. And he's, you know, in typical fashion, he as the Facilities Director is doing it all as opposed to supervising various people. So you can read this outline of what he does, and, you know, I kind of chuckled with a few of the things he said. You know, they too have a historical building that's been in significant need of upgrades and...
The interesting thing was when that number, two and a half million, came up, we said, Margaret asked, is it a big building? And he went, no.
No, it's not. It's right between the police station with the school superintendent, upstairs...
Oh!
And then the other building.
Okay.
It's just an older home-looking type building.
Okay.
And I didn't realize they put that much money.
They've already put that much through grants and things, but he seemed, he seemed to be very frustrated over the work.
Yeah, and seems to feel it is not near completion at this point.
Yeah. So anyway, I think, you know, he was able to break down the amount of time he spends on different duties. He does do custodial duties as well, takes approximately 20% of his time. He does planning and pricing. He's actually done work to reorganize and reconfigure the town offices, and so because he has a construction manager's license, he's able to do the work himself, which saves a significant amount of money on prevailing wage rates. But that takes about 20 to 30% of his time, and then building monitoring and working on buildings takes approximately 50% of his time. Every single morning, he says, he goes around to the buildings and monitors the mechanical systems in each of the buildings. So he spends a significant amount of time trying to be proactive to make sure he's on top of things. You know, in talking with him, they're not a green community, for example, so they don't necessarily have the energy management systems that we need to monitor here with our buildings. But, you know, he does other things that a shared facilities director might not do here, like the custodial duties, for example.
Mowing.
But they would have to...
He did mowing, too.
He did mowing, and he works cooperatively with the Highway Department. So he uses their seasonal help to help mow the facilities in that area and things like that. But there are other things that could easily be, well, could easily be assigned to a position like this. Number one, being responsible for the energy management systems, all of the building systems, being responsible for coordinating townwide OSHA compliance, overseeing the building janitorial services. So I think, I know that we're well into the budget process here. In an ideal world, if we had the resources, the financial resources, to be able to do something like this and deal with deferred maintenance issues, I think that it would benefit the town greatly, I do, to have someone who spends their time dedicated to the buildings alone. So that's what we have. Now, ideas about funding, I identified one potential new funding source in solar pilot revenues that could potentially fund this position. There's also the possibility of refining the building custodial contract to change the maintenance schedule so that there could be some savings realized from that and shifted to a position. And then as far as highway responsibilities and shifting facilities duties from highway, highway could potentially take on transfer station operations, scheduling and oversight of staff at the transfer station, potentially in the future, mowing the cemeteries, of course, with the permission of the cemetery commissioners, and dedicating their, the rest of their time to roads, trees, grounds, and things that are under their jurisdiction. Okay.
And the individual that we talked to for Boilston, which is the...
Oh, yeah.
He easily fills 40 to 50 hours a week with no problem, and we're talking half-time here. So I think that there would be plenty for this individual to do and take care of.
I've provided you the job description for the part-time position that was advertised by Wes Boilston early this fiscal year. And I did specifically ask Nancy and Chris, they're the two Wes Boilston reps, if they would be willing to modify the job description based on, you know, based on our needs or our combined needs as opposed to just theirs, and they said yes, they'd be open to that. They also said that their preference would be, would be not to be the lead community in a shared service agreement. And I thought that was really interesting. I thought that was really interesting, where Berlin could, could be the lead community. So this is for the Board's consideration at this point. I do, I do think that this would be a benefit to the town and its buildings, but I know that there's a lot to digest.
It is a lot to digest, and I don't want to rush into something just because, you know, we think this is what we need, and then maybe perhaps if we'd given time, we may have been able to figure out something in addition to that. So I'm sure we can look over the information.
Okay.
So let's see, this is Wes Boilston's draft job description.
And they actually have already...
And this is a draft job description too, or the second?
They have already funded the position.
They have. Wes Boilston has.
Yeah, that's funded.
For a part-time or...
For a part-time, $35,000.
Okay.
They have, yeah, they have funding in it for half.
And part of the reason they wish to partner with us is they're having trouble, as I'm sure that we would, they're having trouble finding someone to do a half-time on...
A qualified candidate.
A qualified candidate. So that is why it would be a good fit for the two communities together, because then we could potentially get a better pool of candidates.
Oh, I agree, I'm just not sure. I mean, maybe they do it half-time for one year and we tag in the second year, you know, if we're not ready.
Is there a page two? I get one of three, three of three.
Uh-oh. Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, too, actually. Scanned only pages one and three. I can get you page two.
Two.
Appreciate it. Was it, was it in the Google Drive?
Yes, but I think it was probably scanned one-sided instead of two. I probably have it double-sided and it's in here somewhere, maybe.
Yeah.
I have the hard copy, I can, I'll email it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. And there are a lot of, you know, I'm sorry, I did belabor the point, but there are other things, I mean, we have to put the other pieces of the puzzle together, you know, with the highway, highway duties, getting the other boards and committees on board to see if we can shift that.
But if it's not funded, you can't do anything.
That's true.
Right. I was thinking at this point, because it took so long to get Wes Boilston going, that we weren't going to do it in this coming fiscal year, because it took them a long time to get back to us. Okay, you want to move on to the draft annual town meeting warrant?
Yes, I actually have recommendations on 13 articles that I'm going to ask for the Board's support to include. I've identified the page numbers and the title of the article. However, the details inside all of these articles might not be complete, but I, you know, this is a matter of understanding that they, they're going to need to be in, in the warrant. The first one is on page nine. It's the fire EMS pumper tanker, and it's to extend the sunset clause. Last year, it was voted with a sunset clause at June 30th, 2020, and the truck's not going to be done by then, so we're, I'm, we'd be asking to extend it to June 30th, 2021. Do you want me to just go through the list?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay, pages 10 and 11 are the so-called consent articles. The first is filling vacancies in town offices. The next is accepting the reports of officers and committees. The following one is authorizing the treasurer to borrow in anticipation of reimbursement. The following one is establishing the revolving funds. And then there are two more. There is appropriation for insect and pest control. And then finally is the authorization to appropriate the apportionment of Chapter 90 funds. On page 12, there is a new article here, and it's actually, this is in accordance with Chapter 30B, Section 12B. Typically, the Select Board has the authority to enter into contracts for up to three years. This authorizes the Board to enter into contracts exceeding three years. So for things like the solar pilot agreement, for development agreements, for, and long-term leases and things like that, Town Meeting gives authorization to the Board to execute long-term agreements like that.
So it's not for employees?
No, it's not, this is not employment contracts.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which should, which should only be for...
Three years.
Three years, yeah.
Or up to three years.
To three years, right. What else? Outstanding Town Reports, the moderator, Berlin's moderator includes this article to hear additional verbal reports from committees who hadn't previously submitted their written report. So that's the next one. The following one is the standard fiscal year budget article. Page 13, this is an annual, kind of an annual article, the Planning Board Master Plan. It's to appropriate $5,000 for master plan updates. Page 16, there is, this would be a bylaw amendment to remove the Dodd... Page 16, there is, this would be a bylaw amendment to remove the dod licensing, assessors' maps, and permitting software revolving funds from the list of revolving funds under Article 20, Section 1 of the bylaws. Those revolving funds no longer are needed, and so they shouldn't be referred to in the bylaw. And page 19, this is establishing the date and time for the annual town meeting, and that would be May 11th, 2020. So in total, there are 13 articles that I recommend the board vote to include in the town meeting warrant.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? I know, I'm shuffling, I think it's two.
These, this is only a start, by the way. I'm not, you know, I'm just doing them in phases.
I thought I had a question here, but it-
Most of these are pretty standard.
They really are.
If you have a little bit, I'll have more questions, but for now, I'll second it so we can chug along.
Okay, well, there's, is there any questions or comments?
I reserve the right to come back and ask.
I am going to-
Oh, I know what I was gonna ask. At one point, when we were looking for, well, we were looking at the town hall manager job description-
Yeah.
And we were losing the town hall advisory committee. We had talked about, or I had actually talked to June, I guess, about, do we continue with the revolving account for the town hall, the $40,000? And is that something that you had thought about?
I actually, I think, I hadn't thought much about changing the way it is. I would absolutely recommend keeping the revolving fund for now since the, since it is a fee-based service. So money in, money out, and I would like to see, based on a, you know, a sustainable, workable fee schedule, I'd like to see how, how that building can be as self-sustaining as possible.
Right.
So I would keep the revolving fund going.
For this year?
I would keep it going for now.
I know, we, I just didn't know whether you had thought anything about it. So now it's on your radar?
It is. Not about, yeah, not about removing it yet, but-
Right, I'll think about it. Right. I mean, it was just something that we thought we needed to look at.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Okay, then we have a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
You're good for right now?
For now.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. I'm going to be sending all the non-standard articles of this first group over to town council to begin their review.
Okay.
Okay.
That should be pretty easy for them, huh?
It should.
Are you giving them a time limit when it needs to be?
Yep, we have.
24 hours.
Yeah.
All right. And you have a round five for budget, of budget recommendations?
I do. I have only seven, I think, tonight. Again, some pretty straightforward ones. First, line 17, which is assessors' part-time wages. The increase shown here is for 2%. This includes not only the 1.5% cost of living recommended by the personnel committee, it also includes a small amount of money to pay for a few extra hours for each of the part-time personnel in that department because it's a reval year. And I would recommend including that.
Okay.
The article, I'm sorry, line 26, data systems' part-time salary. This is a revision from the original budget request. This eliminates the data systems coordinator salary or stipend. Those duties are gonna be shifting over to me, and I'm not going to be seeking a stipend for those duties. And we'll continue to look to see how we manage the town's data systems moving forward.
Okay.
The next is line 49, public safety expense, oh, sorry, police expenses. And there is, there's a $50 increase requested in this line. It amounts to 0%, essentially, just over 0%. And I recommend, I recommend this request. Line 66, communications wages. This is actually just one position. This is the public safety administrative assistant downstairs. Last year, there were some hours budgeted for overtime, there were a few hours budgeted for overtime. This year, it's just reflecting the 1.5% cost of living adjustment, and so that's a net reduction of 1.7% in outline, and I recommend that. The next one is line 75, transfer station part-time wages. This is a revision from the original budget request, and it shows a reduction of 2.7% because of the shift from an employee who was a bit higher paid than some of the attendants, and that person has now, we've, we've reorganized, and that position is no longer at the transfer station, so it reduces that line by a little over $1,000, or 2.7%. And I recommend that. Next, under line 100, CMRPC assessment. This is a request of $842 in the annual assessment. We get an awful lot of services from CMRPC for $842. We're, we're extremely fortunate, but it's a $19 increase over FY '20, or, I say the dollar increase first before I say the percent, because I could say 2.3%. Of what? So it's a 2.3% increase, and I, I do recommend that as well. And then finally, line 114, property liability insurance. This reflects a decrease from the FY '20 appropriation because the school has come off of the buildings insured by the town, so it's a reduction of $12,150, or 11.4%. And I recommend that as well.
So does it, do you think that that could change?
If we add buildings?
No, no, I mean, I know we don't have our, we don't have a contract in place for, like, a dollar.
Oh, the lease?
Yeah, the lease.
Yeah. I think that's, I don't think that's going to change. I think the school district, the school district is insuring the building regardless.
Okay.
But we do have to do a lease agreement with the school district.
Yes, yes.
So that's something we need to-
I just didn't know if it could go back, back up, but I don't think so. Okay. The other question I had was, is it communication expenses?
Mm-hmm.
Is that Devon's?
Yes, it is. And I have the meeting Wednesday there, and I should have a better sense of what that assessment's going to come, what that assessment's gonna come in at. So I can't recommend that one yet.
All right, just, it didn't really have a number by it.
Yeah.
It's 66 and a half.
Yeah, no, no information yet on that.
All right.
Okay.
Any questions?
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Not yet.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're gonna move on to the, to the, to approve the amended job descriptions. Administrative secretary first.
Okay, so the proposed changes include changing the title from administrative secretary to administrative assistant. The position would report to the town administrator. A lot of the revisions in this particular job description reflect the addition of the town administrator in the reporting structure. Personnel committee reviewed this last week and recommended the changes. Right, I mean, yeah, they, they voted to approve the changes.
That we had, oh, that you had in red line.
That we had redlined, yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a, okay, do I hear a second?
Oh, seconded.
Okay, comments, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the 18 town hall manager?
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Manager there.
I know, but I-
Uh-huh. Oh, my gosh.
You know, things spell check won't catch.
I know.
Language is a word.
Yeah.
Now, this one was, this one had several, had several amendments, and the personnel committee actually recommended a couple of additional modifications to the job description. Those are shown in italics on your redline version. So in addition to the changes the board had already seen, personnel committee recommended adding, under essential duties, develop equitable fee schedule with approval of the board of selectmen for use of the 1870 town hall. And they also recommended adding research sources of funds, including but not limited to grant opportunities for upkeep of the building and programming.
Good job.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
And we have a motion and a second. To develop the equitable fee schedule, is that all right, the wording? Do you need to work with that person, perhaps, Margaret?
Yeah. You good with that?
Okay.
Develop equitable, equitable fee schedule in consultation with the town administrator-
Right.
And with approval of the board of selectmen.
Okay. I'm good with that. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so you made a motion, and you made a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Then again, I'll be working on a draft policy this week to be introduced to the board next week on that.
Okay. And now we're doing the part-time custodian.
This is one very small change, but it's an important change. On page two, I've shaded the, it's four words, all handicap parking spaces. So this is to be incorporated with his duties of 23 Linden.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we should have stuck, oh, this is a new one, never mind. So we've got a, I was just wondering whether we wanted to go ahead and schedule a coffee talk so that we could actually have the 1870 again.
I was just gonna say, can I recommend that if you're going to continue to do these, that you just choose a day of the week?
Particular month?
Yeah.
Particular month?
Do a, do an actual schedule so you don't have to revisit this every single time and have them all over the place?
Do regular scheduled?
So people know when they're coming.
We, we probably need to try to avoid, you know, summer vacation-
Yeah.
And that kind of thing. So if we did it like-
Why don't you come up with something and then come back and we can, next week, say?
We could do that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it makes sense to schedule one for June, but I think on a quarterly basis after that, I mean, skip the summer.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right?
Sometime in June before school starts.
Uh-huh, right.
And then pick it up sometime in September.
But then you just give the schedule to the 1870 or where-
Book in advance.
You're, and you're, and people always know when it's coming, so you're not-
We talked about this when we set the agenda, and we're, you were suggesting June 11th.
Is that what I said?
I think so.
Good.
Why?
Sounds good to me.
Do we want to tentatively check on June 11th and then set it after that?
That would be Thursday.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
June 11th. 6:30. Grand Hall.
All right. And then we can, we can, maybe when I come in to set the agenda with you this week, for next week, we can talk about what the next months would be?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Maybe just pick, like, third Thursday or the second Thursday of-
Pick your month, pick your, yep, pick your, Thursdays, I, well, I've, I've found now that Thursdays seem to work for the 1870 so far, so-
Yeah.
Thursdays might be a good, might be a good evening.
Maybe that would be good, and we could check with Leanne, too.
Mm-hmm.
All right. All righty. Okay, schedule the, we talked about scheduling the pre-annual town meeting information second session.
Yep. Thursday, April 16th, 7:00 PM, Grand Hall, 1870 Town Hall.
Yep. Okay. And then we have a job description for the council and aging director.
Yes. This one, this one saw significant markups. Oh, dropped all the formatting in there. This is introduced to the board tonight.
Was this the one that was, I think, sent to us by Bob Blair with the changes?
So Bob Blair, yep, he met with the board one night and talked about changes council and aging would like to see. Planning board offered several additional modifications.
Planning boards?
Planning, did I say planning? I meant personnel.
Okay, okay. Whatever.
Personnel made several additional modifications, and so, okay, yeah, it's, it's really coming along. I think it does incorporate almost everything. I'm gonna have to get you a different red line that doesn't show all the formatting, because that's just too much.
So this is just for a first read tonight?
It's just for a first read tonight, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
Well, the top one, it does, is a clean draft, so you'd be able to at least see what it's, what it would look like in a finished, finished state.
Okay, so this will be on next week's agenda to look at again?
Mm-hmm.
Board comments and questions? Questions and comments?
We'll give you five minutes, how's that?
All right, I can go quick. All right, so, I know there was a study done, an energy study done on the, oh, here, I need to turn that into, on power and things like that. So once again, going around the interweb, wanted to throw this into the pot. Portland installs turbines in city water pipes to create free electricity. So I know that we don't have city water, but there are, I think there's a water pipe on 62 by, was that Five Corners? That really ugly intersection that says, like, Uzha Blanka? So I didn't know if this could kind of be thrown into the pot, too. They were saying, where was it? And again, it's Portland, it's a lot bigger than us, but, oh, where'd you go?
So those actually stir the water?
Yeah, the four turbines are expected to produce at least 2 million worth of free electricity over the next 20 years. So again, pardon the pun, don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but if we're looking at alternate energy sources, can't see why this can't be included, just for a looksee.
So you're sending this to Energy, or?
I could, or whoever is looking at the, the recommendation, yeah.
Yeah.
So we can look at that.
Do you, I can make a copy of that, actually.
Okay, right here.
I'd like to, I'd like to check with, I'd like to check with the state to see what innovative programs are being done like this.
In general, you're gonna have a lot of things that are gonna get approved a lot faster than something that is technology that's used in Portland where it's a lot warmer.
Is it Portland, me?
Portland, Oregon.
Oh, okay.
So again, reading the community advocate, a newspaper not for Berlin, but for Shrewsbury, Westboro, Northboro, Southboro, Marlboro, Hudson, and Grafton, came across two articles. We had talked about this at coffee talk, and was wondering if we could do this with the item, that there's an article in here where Northboro seeks individuals to fill town vacancies. So I know that it's on the web, and I know that we talked about it, but we make assumptions that everyone has access to the interweb, and people may not. So didn't know if that's something, I'm happy to write it, to give to Jan, to see if she can, could put it in, can share with you that one. There was also another interesting article in here. When is Historical coming to visit us? They were invited birthday.
23rd.
So it might be some time then. So there's a great article on Shrewsbury Through Time, so it's a local author. He's a historian, he's over at Tectnik Bookseller. Thought about, you know what, there's a lot of history in Berlin that- Thought about, you know what, there's a lot of history in Berlin that I don't think many people know about. So while Historical is here, thought it would be a good opportunity to talk to them, to see if there's something that either they can do or something that maybe we could pull people together to do. I know a lot of people have the, was it the history of Berlin up through 1959, but then after 1959, there's nothing. And there's lots of really cool historical places in Berlin that I don't think a lot of people know about. And obviously, I'm not asking for, you know, a book to be written, but again...
We have asked Barry to write a second book.
Well, so, well, you know, and maybe we ask Mr. Bigford, and maybe we ask other, you know, elders in town who have the history to maybe start doing something. Because when that generation is gone, there's a whole lot of history in this town that goes away with it. So I will save this article for when Historical comes to visit. Right, so volunteer, that one's done. So I did reach out, even though it was in the Beacon last week, where I had talked about Concord uses social media to increase citizen participation. I did reach out to their town manager, Kate Hodges. So I'm going to have a chat with her tomorrow to find out why they did it, how they did it, how many people, what's the cost, is it working, et cetera, et cetera, figuring I don't want to say no when we don't have any information on that. So I can report that back when I have that. All right, so we got that one.
That's the Facebook Live thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So and she was, I reached out to her and she wrote me right back. So, you know, again, maybe we do it, maybe we don't do it, but I don't want to say we can't do it without having information to say, oh my God, it takes 25 people, it's going to cost $800 bazillion, you know, their participation is only up by 1%. So let's take a look at the information before we say no. So I reached out, again, I get all sorts of things. The letter from the Historical Commission from June Miller and Mr. Agar about putting something together. I don't want to reach out to the town to see if anybody could help without getting feedback from them. I haven't heard, so I will put this on the agenda to talk to them when they are on the 11th.
Okay, is there something specific that you're asking for on the agenda?
Well, because, I mean, so they talked about, so June talked about how she and the...
No, I mean, is there something you want me to put on the agenda specifically?
Oh, I'll come up with something for that. But I mean, I want to ask them if they're even going to consider doing this, because I don't want to reach out for help through the town to say, does anybody have, like, framing experience, you know, are there old frames out there? You know, besides Marty, who else can help, you know, look through pictures? And have all these people say yes, and then Historical says, never mind. I don't want to do that, because that would just, like, suck the wind out of any more volunteer opportunity. So I would like to hear from them to say, yes, it's something that we want to do, no, it's something that we don't want to do. And then it either goes or dies.
This actually seemed like something that would be discussed at a Historical meeting as opposed to a Board meeting also, just as a, it's a Historical Committee project, and they would decide if they were going to pursue it or not. The Board does not actually do that.
But the Board could ask, right?
Right. And that's what I'm just saying, that that is, that is their business.
They might have to discuss it in their, in their meeting then, after you bring it up.
Yep. And then Easter Egg 2.0 is well on its way. I put a note out this weekend. We already have one gal who came back and offered up a certificate to the Apex. She said she has a gift certificate that she'd give. There's a woman that I work with that also has contacts. Somebody else came out and said that they would give a gift certificate. So once again, you know, when you ask for help, the town gives it back. So I know REC was meeting tonight to try and nail down a date. Obviously, it's South Commons, and all the items that we need to do, I'll probably go back to link in March and present them with what needs to be done, because if it is early April, we got a lot, we don't have much time, so we got to giddy up and go to get people involved, candy, stuffing up the eggs, you know, more than a handful of people to throw out, the probably 2,000-plus eggs that we did last year, advertising going around to sponsors. So we have lots to do. You know, REC is driving it, I'm helping. I know it's not a Selectmen-sponsored event, but again, it was such a big hit last year that I would hate to lose the opportunity and not do it this year.
What's the date?
We don't have, so obviously, it's the April vacation, I think, is the 12th. I think that's Easter. So I'm thinking that's vacations, and I don't know when the fishing derby is, so we want to avoid that weekend. So I'm going to guess probably early April. So yeah, we've got probably about a month.
And Easter is the 12th.
I think so, yeah. So Easter's early this year, so, and I don't know what the availability of the field is either, so that's where I'll need REC to say, they're open, they're open, they're open for us to grab a date. So I should hear back from REC after tonight and can update tomorrow, next week. All right, how was that for five minutes? How'd I do?
I don't know.
You went all over.
Did I? Thanks. So does this mean, what, next week I have to pull back on one of them? Okay, all right, I can do that.
All right. Seeing as how we do not need an executive session, oh, oh.
One thing. Sorry. One thing. The Sheriff's Department apparently not only picks up trash, they paint buildings for the price of lunch.
Yeah, yeah, they do. They did this room.
So maybe something to consider at some point, and getting the carpeting off the wall out there and those types of things. If you're talking about sprucing up the signs and the art and that, I think you really need to start with the paint, especially if you can get it for the price of lunch.
Carpet on the wall out there?
Oh, yes. It dates our building pretty good. The sign guy actually pointed out that that varies from...
Me neither.
If you look at the bottom of the wall, that's a specific timeframe, and it's carpeting, and he said it would look so much better out there if we pulled that off. It would make it look twice as big out there.
Huh. We'll have to take a look and leave.
Did it have something to do with the acoustics? So there wouldn't be an echo?
No, it was a stylistic choice at that time period. He gave me the time period.
What's it been? How long, when did this building, 20? Wow.
Yeah.
Time flies.
So we'll take a look. Where's the carpet?
It's all on the bottom half.
Lockers.
Yeah.
And, you know, brushing up, taking the green off.
Oh, I agree.
All this would make a huge difference in making this a more welcoming space for people to come into.
Yeah.
You don't like the peach? You like the peach?
I hate the peach.
Don't tell Peggy you said that.
I hate the peach and the green.
Peggy Sardell, I think, picked the color.
Peach to their own.
Maybe it's supposed to be beige.
And these chairs look like they could have a disco ball rolling in the...
Yeah, I was thinking about these chairs today.
I got a lava lamp at the house.
I don't think there's any cushion left on this one.
There you go.
Motion to adjourn if we're...
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Thanks, Mr. Be.
Yep.